Conference will now be recorded.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the board supervisors meeting November 25th. It's also available go to meeting. We have an agenda in front of us, any additions, corrections? If none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Ma'am made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kim, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 We have the minutes and claims for November 18th. Any additions or corrections there? None, I entertain a motion. Make motion for 18th meeting, claims, Mark's made a motion, do I have a second?
I seconded.
Any discussion?
Roll call, Doug.
Aye.
Mark.
Good.
Sam.
Hi.
Sydney.
I'm staying.
Jim.
Aye.
Moving on, county attorney, general discussion, I think I've seen you earlier.
He's here, but he's out in the hallway.
Okay.
Grabbing a copy from me.
Alright, yes. We'll go to the sheriff, I don't see him. Yeah, I'll move down to department head discussion. None? We'll go ahead and go to county attorney, or county engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A couple of things, I'll give you an update on the bridge south McIntyre, they did a pour on Monday, I believe, the southeast corner bridge approach. That section was longer than most because their crane had busted some pavement up and they've got, beyond what the plan was, they've got to pay for replacing some of the stuff that they busted up. So they got one quarter of the bridge approaches done, the south ones are the longest ones. They're going to try to do some more paving the next couple of days, I know it's going to be cold, they've got to heat and everything else to keep the ground from freezing and keep the concrete warm. So they're going to try to continue on as best they can with the paving there. So, that's the construction. I had a resignation letter from an employee yesterday that's going to be leaving here in two weeks, so we're down another full time snowplow operator for the winter, so we'll try to continue on trying to hire part time and full time now. And then also, the week commissioner brought this up, that conservation is, they've been rotating their pickups every year, selling, you know, buying ones off the DOT bid and then trying to sell the other ones outright to try to keep that plan solvent for them. And we commissioner kind of brought it up to me that, is that something that you guys might want to consider looking into purchasing one of those trucks for him? We talked about equipment, I don't know, maybe a month ago or something about how that would work, just kind of throwing that out there to see if it was something you guys wanted to consider looking into or not. So, I bring that up. And we don't have to discuss it, but.
Depends on the price as far as what.
Well, and you know that conservation is doing, you know, they're rotating their pickups, you know, they get them at government discount and they try to sell them outright. Usually that's positive cash for them, whether they break even or maybe earn a little bit more, so they'd be looking at probably trying to, you know, if they were going to get rid of one, they'd want to be able to break even on it at least, so. And their trucks have, I don't know, 10,000, maybe less than 10,000 miles on them, there's two of them they're selling, so I mean, they're not, you know, they're not new, but they're not, you know, high mileage vehicles either, so maybe something you guys want to consider, we can talk about it another day, but just kind of throwing that out there as a scene. I've talked to Mike a little bit about it, but we really never fully had a long discussion on it, so, something to think about. Other than that, I've got, I think I kind of warned you guys last week about bridge inspections and costs, so we've got a professional services agreement for WHKS to do our bridge inspections. And as I mentioned, there's, there's other things involved that normally aren't involved this time around, bridge cross sections and some other ratings and other, 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 you got a lot of railroad pipe culverts in the ground that span more than 20 feet, so now they become structures and they haven't been rated, so things like that need to be rated yet. So, additional work, we're thinking that, you know, two years from now when we do bridge inspections again, the fees will be a little lower, you know, this is just kind of a, hopefully it's a one time deal for now until we get more regulations from that, but their fee is not to exceed the fee of $114,700. And that includes expenses, so they are ready to roll on bridge inspection in the next week or two, so.
Okay. Which has in front of us, professional service agreements, approved bridge inspection contract, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the professional service agreement with WHKS.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I seconded.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Roll call, Mark.
Good.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
That's all I've got for you this morning. Remember the question, you guys have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks for coming back to the department head.
Chair.
So, just wanted to give you guys an update, I've been talking, Brandon and Dave, there's an MBD 360 project with the state of Iowa, they're totally redoing our arts program, they're doing all their paperwork for the title of registration and also driver's license, so it's a billion dollar project. And one part of it is, is that during COVID, they bought a very expensive scheduling system and they did not allow the counties to partake of that, we had to either do our own book or purchase a system ourselves. Part of the MBD 360, they're allowing us to all have access to that, so that if a person wants to make an appointment, they log in, they make an appointment, and then they can't make an appointment somewhere else, because we have a lot of people that sign up for drives at our office and then go to another county and pass and don't cancel our drive. So then we've got a drive taken for the week, they no show, when we go to check and see the column or something, we look and see and they got issued a driver's license. So this is going to make it one stop where they do their scheduling, or we can help individuals, we also will take walk-ins, but they are providing us a TV screen and a kiosk for individuals, so that they'll get texts when, to remind them the day before of their appointment, when they come in, it'll tell them where they are in the queue. If they don't have an appointment, they can sign in there and just put, put into where the next slot is available, it's going to be really nice. They advise us not to have it like right in our office, so the proposal, and this is why I'm here, because Dave wanted me to talk to you, we think, right, all we need is power, it's all wireless. So the kiosk and the screen, we would like to put east of the elevator doors upstairs, because then the screen would be up and then there's three pews seating areas, three of the four, they can see the screen if they're sitting at angle spots. The one outside of the Veterans Affairs wouldn't be able to see it, but the other three would all be able to see the screen, so just want to let you know that is proposed, if you have any issues with that.
Would it be, would that be the only way that they could reserve a spot, or can they still call you?
They can still call us and we can help them do it. It's kind of like with our county, I have individuals that want to get personalized plates and it's all online, and I've had probably half dozen that have sat in my office and I've done it with them. If someone calls, we can walk them through, we can, we can log in and do it as well. If we have someone outside, we can go in and just close up spots, it's really, and when they walk in, if they don't have an appointment, they just would check in and it'll assign them the next available appointment, so.
Sounds like a much more efficient system for you folks.
And right now there's some frustration because people will get online and they go to the DOT site and we're not listed at all, so they think we can't do driver's license here, or they come in all upset because they tried to make an appointment and they couldn't because they're looking at the state that system, so it's going to be more of a one stop. If we, in some counties are choosing not to partake, but they will have the screen on the state site that says call the office. But at this time to, the kiosk and the TV screen, if you didn't sign up now and you want to sign up later, because it's an initial project, there's a pot of funds to pay for those, if we wanted to get on board later, we'd have to pay it out of our.
So, so right now there tentatively is no cost?
There is no cost, I have a TV screen in my vault right now. The kiosks, Leighton, our DOT IT person said they still need some parts for that, but we've got the screen, the mount, and some Apple TV mount thing too, that he's already brought yesterday. Brandon's already uploaded the programs that we need onto our computer system, so when we're, when they're ready to go, we'll be ready to go once we get it, so.
Is this something they can do at home also that, lock in somehow, or it's just?
They can go online and schedule their appointments, and they can schedule with Mitchell County, and then, but if they come in, they can just go to the kiosk and do a bunch of that they're there and what they want to do and it'll give them an appointment.
Sounds good.
Moving forward, and like I said, if they can't, aren't able to do that, they can come in our office or call, we can help them do it too. Just want to let you know that's the plan, we have a big TV and kiosk in the lobby upstairs. That'll be, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hannah. I'll circle back, county attorney, you have a few minutes, Aaron, do you have anything? We're going to circle back here where you were gone, so we have a couple of minutes yet before our public hearing, do you have anything?
Not anything specific, I mean, I'll be here, questions on me, the other stuff. Supposed to be doing tax school today, so I don't really care about that, but I need to see all the answers. I'm not in a big hurry to go, but if you speak about that, so I might have to buy out of here. You gotta click on the mouse to show that you're watching. Or you want to know, but just explains my situation.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron. We've got two minutes yet, for the last. I'll move down to number nine. Prove 2025 debt certification.
Okay, I sent a copy, everyone should have it, so this should be simple moving forward, because they combined it to the one urban renewal that it really was. So we have $900,000 for the internal loan, that was just approved, and then we have the absolute energy rebate for $451,283, and the OSH elevator for $81,166, for a total of $1,432,449.
Okay, thanks, Rachel. On the agenda, I have approved 2025 debt certification, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve the 2025 debt certification.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Both second now.
Have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion?
Roll call, sorry, roll call, Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Okay. We'll sit tight here for less than a minute. Okay, it's 8:45, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 63, entitled an ordinance amending the Mitchell County zoning ordinance, ordinance 17, making revisions regarding wind energy conversion systems, W E C S, and battery energy storage systems, B E S S. This time, did we have any oral or written comments?
I have none.
Sydney?
None.
Pam?
I had none.
Mark? I had none. Rachel?
None.
And it was posted or?
Yeah, published and posted, posted and on the board.
Thank you. Any public comment?
What are the provisions?
Do you want to do a summary for you?
Yeah.
John Robbins and I, I'll get help to look at the process. So there, we adopted a earlier amendment to the zone ordinance for the regulations. We adjusted some insurance requirements, increased some liability requirements for what they call small scales, like residential at $1 million to $2 million, utility scale at $10 million to $29 million. We also adjusted the requirements for what they have to illustrate on the site plan, so it's equal to the setback requirements. And then we corrected some numbering that got off in the document, I think that's all.
Thank you.
I guess still as unanimous, recommendation for approval of compliance, I'm sure she'll still add.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
What's the setback on, which the, how many people?
The requirement, yeah. So for utility scale, the current requirements that they passed, there's various types of setback requirements for dwellings and occupied buildings, it's 1,450 feet from the nearest point of those buildings. It's a half mile from conservation areas and public recreation areas. My memory's not the best, so I'll pull it up here for you.
And that is for wind and solar battery?
This is for utility scale, wind specifically. So from animal confinements, it's, well, animal confinements, utility lines or pipeline right away, public and private road and railroad right away, it's 600 feet or 125% of the total height of the third line, which is when the blade's at its topmost point in its rotation, whichever of those is greater. From public drainage districts or ditches and very title tile, 300 feet. FEMA regulated flood planes, 600 feet or 125% of the total height, whichever's greater. For any incorporated city limits, it's a mile for planning purposes, housing buildings, those kind of things. And for woodlands that are greater than 40 acres, it's 1,450 feet, so there's a lot of different requirements in there. For batteries, it's 50 feet from a property line and non-participating property line, and 300 feet from any dwelling or occupied area park.
And then, Amanda, you have a copy of that?
I do.
So if you have any more questions, anything, reach out, Heather. Okay, this time I'll close the public hearing then, at 8:49. And I'll move down, first consideration of ordinance 63, entitled an ordinance amending the Mitchell County zoning ordinance, ordinance 17, making revisions regarding wind energy conversion systems, W E C S, and battery energy storage systems, B E S S. This time I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Sydney? A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? If none?
Can I ask one question? Is it to approve the resolution or to approve the first consideration?
Yeah, we have the option to waive the first and second, go right to the third, so, depends on, I think the way we're doing, we're doing the first here, so I wasn't sure either.
Okay, so you, that's a motion to waive the first and second?
Yes.
Sydney, would you, would your motion, would you say your motion is to waive the second and third?
Yes, my motion is to waive the second and third readings.
It would be the first and, I'm sorry, the first and second, that's my bad, have that corrected?
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a second? Do you?
Yeah, second for that.
So we have a first and second, to waive the first two, reading one and two, any discussion? If none, roll call.
Roll call, Sydney. Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Good.
Pam.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on, we'll move down to number 10, discussion on wastewater pretreatment plant.
I put this on the agenda, Todd and myself had the invite to the wastewater treatment plant, the, the maintenance supervisor for the plant wanted us to come and, sumo tomo has been, is the parent company of Ballant, and Ballant's accounting realizes that there's a lot of money that the county has put into the wastewater, not the county, that Ballant has put into the wastewater treatment plant, which we own that plant. So, they are, they want him to actually define what is ours and what is theirs, and I'm just going to go through some of these bullet points, I guess that might be easier, so, is there any questions from the board?
I need to interrupt here.
Yes.
Go back, sorry, but, of course, everybody knows I don't hear very well. I heard that there was a, a motion, a second, and a vote on waiving the second and third considerations, and I understand that passed, but then I don't recall that there being a vote on the amendment. Did I miss that? Was that on purpose? Or?
We waived the first and second.
Right.
So then we were doing the third.
You don't, but, you're wanting to do it all today, right? But I don't, maybe I missed it, but I don't think there was a vote on the actual amendment to the ordinance.
I would say you are correct. So, as the leader, vice chair today, I'm going by my meeting guide here, and I just went from public hearing to, which is number seven, to number eight. Probably be right to have, after the public hearing, we should have had a vote on the ordinance, correct? The changes. And then we could have moved on to waiving the first and second.
No, you can waive, you can waive the first and second, first, you just have to make sure you vote on the ordinance, right? In other words, like the, and Rachel's got a copy there of the resolution, I did, and you guys may have it too, that's actually one document, but combined, but then there are two things. One is, if you're going to, you, you can either, you can either vote twice and then a third time, like three different meetings and have it pass at all of them, or you can waive the first and second reading and then go straight, I guess you could call it the third consideration, or the first consideration. But you have to vote on that, because the only way you can waive the first and second consideration is if the majority of the board votes to do it, so, and you've done that, because I heard it, so, so you move past, you don't need the first and second reading anymore, but now you have to have a motion, a second, a discussion, vote on the actual amendment. Does that make sense?
So, so we have two resolutions within this document, that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right, and
the first one being 133425, which was waiving the first and second, and then the second resolution would be 1335, okay, all right, that's my error, sorry.
So, if I'm understanding and making sure, I have moved to approve ordinance number 63, resolution 133525, and ordinance amending Mitchell County zoning ordinance, ordinance 17, making revisions regarding wind energy conversion systems, W E C S, and battery energy storage systems, B S.
If we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? If none, roll call.
Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Good.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, but Aaron, okay, so we'll go back to discussion on wastewater pretreatment plant.
So, they're estimating that, he's estimating that they have about half a million to possibly a million dollars worth of improvements that they've done to that facility on their own, and some of it's new equipment, some of it's repairs and rebuilding of our original equipment. The new equipment has been tagged, and so through our discussion, he felt that he needed to maybe possibly tag the rebuilt refurbished equipment only with a different type of color tag or whatever, so it can be designated. I asked him what their expectations are from us, and he said nothing at this time, he just basically wants us to be informed of the expenditures. And the reason this is happening is, their county firm is nervous that if they ever get audited and the auditor comes through and just says, what in here is yours and what in here is the county's, so he wants to get an idea of what, what is what and who has what. I've received some other documents, I have a ton of unsigned documents in regards to when this thing first went together, but I have been sent some that are signed, I'm not through the whole contract in regards to what the responsibilities are for each party yet, but there is no action on this, this is just basically for the board to maybe be aware of some stuff that's going on.
Can you send us that list of issues or challenges or equipment that they have, that they presented to you, or perhaps a recap of that?
Well, I don't have a list of the equipment that's been done.
Okay.
That's kind of what the process. That's kind of what the process is.
That's what they are working on?
Yeah, so it was just a walkthrough and pointing here. And, and I told him that he retags it with a different tag showing that a new tag is per, we'll just say a computer that they bought. It's a lot more than that. But okay, it's tagged that this is Ballant's computer. But if there's something that gets overhauled, it'll get tagged differently. And I told him then he should also document the amount of money that they have into that refurbished piece of equipment. But it's still ours, but they rebuilt it. So there needs to be some monetary value as far as what they put into it.
Right, so we would need some sort of accounting from them as far as what their improvements, because that also affects our insurance. And I would agree, the documents behind the change in the lease agreement are questionable. And there was also a statement by our prior county attorney that the insurance was to be covered by Ballant and the county was to be named as the insured in one of these documents. So I think we need to maybe follow up again because we're now paying that insurance out there. So I think that's good.
If it's a signed document, that's the thing.
Yeah.
There's a lot of documents.
That's, there's areas.
So that's the problem. I'll just throw this out to the board. Is there any reason, I mentioned this at the meeting, and he has no authority to say yes or no about this. But is there any reason why we want to own a wastewater pretreatment plant? I mean, if Ballant wants to purchase it? I have no, I have no reason why I would want to own that.
Well, there again, I think we have to go back. And like you say, the agreements and then the change in the lease agreement from the city to Ballant on employees that work there. And when the insurance got confused, you know, we, we probably need to dig into that a little more before we could, can make a decision on that because it's a whole lot deeper than just us saying that we don't want to own a pretreatment plant. I don't believe that we should be owning any pretreatment facilities.
And that, that's the reason for my comment is just that.
Can I get some historical data on this?
Sure.
Okay, so when we built the pretreatment plant, the EPA regulations are extremely more stringent if Ballant owns it. So that's their best interest in us owning it. If they were to own it there, it's much more constructive because we're a county. We get more leeway. So Ballant is going to have to weigh that. I know that they historically, Rachel and I, it calls every time they get for the special, I'm sorry, I ran down here, for the special assessment. And they, I know they have ongoing concerns with it, but they're also going to have to look into the fact that if they don't do the special assessment through the county and the county owning it, that they're, they're going to have a lot more strings attached to anything they do. Tom Madden can probably address it more clearly as far as what would change. But in our explanation of why it was best for us to own it besides getting tipped for it and everything, or Ballant paying for it, is that Ballant will have a lot more on the line and it'll be a lot more expensive. So there was a, that's why Ballant pays us the monthly fee and pays the special assessment because it was worth it at the time, weight cost analysis.
That wouldn't be a bad thing, would it?
No.
If they lined up the, because we're already paying what they're putting, too much nitrates in the water now? So we're buying credit somewhere else.
Right.
It, I can elaborate on that because that did come up. But also the, we're aware that the regulations are more lenient if the government owns it as compared to Ballant owning it. That came up at the meeting and we discussed that.
So they are talking, have that on the table? Because I explain that every time.
But for me, it's like, well, I, I really don't care. I'm not picking on Ballant, but I really don't care if the requirements are more stringent for you or not. That's a business decision on your part.
Right, so that's something they have to weigh if they want us to own it or if they want to own it.
Yeah.
But that is something that we were told through Madden from S D H is that, you know, that was one of the things that, to maintain them in the county as an employer and doing business, that it was something that we were, we took on that they paid off bills because of that. So, and that's $6,000 something on that they pay us to have the plant and have us.
Okay.
That's all, sorry.
It darked the nitrates. There's, I don't know if I can explain it same way he did, but there's, the nitrates are actually, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, where you said this? I don't know if I'm going to get it out right. They are actually in compliance, but in, but the way that, I don't know if it's EPA or what agency it is, that has the, the forms and the way that it's computed, it shows that it's out, but it's actually not out. And they refuse to change the way that they do that process. That, that was his explanation.
And there's a, there's another, the nitrate is high, but they're offsetting another something. Can't remember what he said otherwise.
They're buying credits in order to, to lower it.
To average them.
But then that also fell through that this firm, this, I don't see big again, said that, no, we're not going to let you do that. It can be done to other places, but they're not going to let them do that.
I think another thing is some of the forms that we were signing off on. That issue came up earlier this year. That caused some concern. So, you know, in terms of all of those issues, it might be a questionable process for us as a county to be owning a pretreatment plant. You know, but something that definitely we need to take a look at all the information and that they give.
Go ahead on that, just do this information.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, discussion on data centers.
I put these next two agenda items on here and they actually could be one, but one has data centers, the other is temporary moratorium. So we have had individual attended meeting. And she made a comment one time that she thought it would be beneficial if we were to actually maybe do ordinance in regards to data centers just to, not to keep them away, but to actually, if they get built, they get built with guidelines and standards that are the way that we want them.
Could you talk a little bit louder, Jim?
Okay, sorry. I had an individual that attended a meeting a while back and she, she suggested that we put together ordinance for data centers not to keep them away, but to actually have them built within guidelines that we feel are appropriate for the county. And then two, three weeks ago, I had another individual where she contacted me and was wondering about the possibility of a moratorium. And I explained to her that moratorium is not just something that is there to stop a process, but it's to just temporarily stop a process. You have to have a reason why you do a moratorium. You can't just place a moratorium indefinitely just to stop what they want to do. So there was, Aaron put together a temporary moratorium. And it's based on, and it can be read if we want to, but basically is to halt the process of data centers coming to Mitchell County. And we'd have to insert a timeline. I would suggest probably the end of 2026. But the, the moratorium, if we approved it, moratorium does not apply to any applications that have been submitted up to the point that we approve it. That's just the way it works. Anything after, if we approve it, it would not, we would not allow them to submit an application for what they want to do. Questions?
I just will state that I've done a lot of research in, in checking into both data centers and, and Bitcoin facilities. And I think we maybe need to clarify that those two things are probably different types of facilities. The Bitcoin facilities that have been suggested here in, in our county are very small facilities, as far as that's concerned, at the two sites that have permits submitted for them already. I've reached out to Johnson County, who just put in a temporary moratorium against data centers and asked for information from those folks. And their comments were that they put that in place so they would have time to research what they want to put in place in that county in terms of large data centers. So they're talking things like large Google facilities or large AI facilities, which are different than the small scale Bitcoin facilities that, to, that have been proposed here in Mitchell County. The electricity use is different. The whole landscape of the project is much larger on those data centers. But it has also been suggested that we look at putting something in place for data centers to make sure that our planning and zoning commission has the time to review what we might hear in Mitchell County need moving forward to make sure that we're making wise decisions on, on facilities that we accept within our county. I think it's known that a few individuals visited the new Manchester hydro-cooled Bitcoin. I'm going to speak a little to the Bitcoin, what I know. The hydro-cooled Bitcoin facility. I will certainly agree, I was certainly thinking, oh, hydro, we're going to be using lots of water. And so this was a learning experience for myself and the other three individuals that rode in the pickup with me down to Manchester, which is a much larger Bitcoin facility in, in that city. It is not water-driven. It is a closed-loop system that uses 100% biodegradable corn glycol product, which of course made those of us that traveled together, you know, quite surprised. The level of noise earlier this year when, when several residents around the Ballant site and later on this year around the Little Cedar site became very concerned was that these facilities were going to be very noisy. But the new hydro facilities are very quiet. I, my foreign voice, I probably talk louder than those facilities are. 20 feet, they're maybe 60 decibels, which is about like an air conditioner or a, or a sewing machine. So I won't go into the details of those systems. I will just say that, that there's definitely a difference between a large data center and the Bitcoin facilities that have just submitted the permits for Mitchell County. And I hope that we can all learn some things. I certainly have learned a lot. And the other thing that I learned was that in the last year, a change has been made to taxation on those facilities. And anyone can correct me if my information is wrong, but there's a 1% on the electricity that is used in those facilities as sales tax that would come back to Mitchell County. In my conversation with the gentleman that is the head of Manchester, his comment was that that would make a difference in their city because it would come back to their city because that one is in city limits in their industrial part, that he, they were expecting a $70,000 income on that side of things. Mitchell County here, it might be anywheres from $40,000 to $60,000, $70,000 a year that we would gain back directly to our local option sales tax. We, we also need to think about the fact that all electricity is taxed, whether it's Alliant or Heartland Power. And those taxes go to the state level. And then a percentage or a portion of them come back to the counties as well. So it, it was a huge learning experience for me. I certainly have heard input from individuals that are very concerned about the impact on the environment and also people that are concerned about having their homes somewhat near those facilities. And, and I hear and understand those concerns. I just wanted to lay out the information that I've learned and been able to gain. And, you know, I encouraged, I've encouraged several individuals to go down and visit the hydro-cooled facility. It was, it was very much different than what, what we expected to see.
So a question for you. So the, the word data centers in here is, was, was there for the meaning of encompassing Bitcoin mining operations also?
On the moratorium.
So if, if you're calling out a difference, a different term for Bitcoin mining system, what would your suggestion be in regards to data centers? And what would that term be? Do you know for a fact that a Bitcoin mining system is not a data center?
So, and that, I would consider that a really good question. I've seen it listed as data center slash Bitcoin, excuse me, Bitcoin facilities or, you know, data centers. If we're going to put a moratorium in place, you know, I was just clarifying what other counties that have put in moratoriums on data centers, what, what are they talking about? What kinds of facilities? And two of the counties that I visited with clarified that Bitcoin facilities have not come to them and they are really not concerned, but they're using data centers in that. That would be a good question for the individuals perhaps that submitted that those, because I think they submitted them as Bitcoin facilities.
I have the applications right here in my hand, actually. So just to, just to clarify this topic, looking at these, it says occupancy use data center slash Bitcoin.
There, yeah.
So I just want to place Switzerland here.
Yeah, no, that's.
To clarify that.
Excellent.
So I don't, from that perspective of how they're applying, I would think that they would fall under.
Under data center.
Under data center.
So I don't, what I don't want to happen is that we're just getting locked into a term and people can make an application and not, to me, a data center is a data center. And it's the Bitcoin mine is a data center. Now, that's my opinion. I don't want some, I don't want somebody to submit an application and put whatever they want on there thinking that they're going to circumnavigate the moratorium simply because they didn't list it as whatever. So are we going to consider data centers, Bitcoin mining also? I would, but.
I think considering the fact that that's what the application says, the moratorium moving forward should say data center slash Bitcoin facilities. Perhaps Aaron has a better handle on that.
I'm not, I'm not a tech guy, right? So, you know, this stuff, it's a little, I drafted this based on what I understood, but I'll be the first to say, you know, if you want to get down in the weeds on this, better get some tech people involved to do the definition. My understanding is, you know, such as it is, that a, a, a data center would include facilities which applications have been submitted. That's my understanding. I've talked to some others that have that same understanding. Now, again, this all came up for me in the last few days because I was out of town. So, I mean, I haven't done a whole lot, so. And if I was going to, you know, you know, if I was really going to get down in the weeds on this, I would start with. the weeds on this, I would assault with other IT specialists, other IT attorneys and drill down in this, you know, but I haven't had time to do that. My understanding is, though, is that data center would include Bitcoin facility. I may, I could be wrong, but I'll let anybody else speak for themselves. And I have a couple of representatives here that might, he knows more than me.
Yeah, let's, John, you, you could weigh in on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think functionally, it, it's computers crunching numbers. And so if I, I mean, I think they're all data centers in a general category, so to speak. Your differences are, you know, the scale, the type of cooling systems, those kind of things. And the county always has the right to interpret its own moratorium, you know, what your intent is to not accept applications on. And you could, someone along the stuff, try to file an application. Obviously, if they've already filed an application, they'd be, be the punch, but like, you have the, like I said, you have the right to interpret your own moratorium intent. And that's how I understand a moratorium to be. Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, like you said, the difference is more scale and systems. Amen.
Yeah. So, and then I also just want to point out that the definitions will come into play when it, an ordinance is created. So then the specification of what a specific data center is, when it comes to an ordinance creation, that would be specified in your definitions under data center. So that way you can specify what that actually clarifies for regulation. So that's just another, another way to clarify that.
To, to add to all of that, I, I agree with what you said as far as data centers is just simply data, data is computer. But a lot of it is based on how you're going to accept an application. So if somebody comes in and names it differently, you can.
Personally, I have the same viewpoint. Data is data to, to me until I have some sort of, some hidden written regulation that I can follow.
Yeah.
So to me, I would consider these applications to follow under a data center. And specifically just because it's written on their application as a data center slash Bitcoin facility.
And if it's not written on the application in the way that you feel it should, you can deny the application.
I can always send it, I can always send it back and I can make them submit more information.
And the next level is also, well, and if they disagree with you, it's that, okay, we're going to bring it before the board and the board to make the decision.
And they can appeal it.
Or that application or not.
Correct.
And I just want to note that a Bitcoin facility, as far as I am, have learned, is a data mining facility.
I got it. Amy, is that you?
Yeah, you can look up the definition for data centers. It's in the Naiwukou. There is already a definition, so just have a look at.
I got clues.
And as far as I'm aware, it does include, you know, the Bitcoin.
Bitcoin, yeah.
Because the miners are computers. It's, it's computer-made. And they are performing processing functions, which, while I'm speaking, I just want to mention that they are considered personal property and they will not be assessed as real estate, just so you're aware of that. The only thing that would be possibly assessed would be perhaps the shipping container and maybe some fencing, but that would be about it. And I, I don't know the specifics of what's being proposed for Mitchell County, but I have read where these data centers consume, again, depending upon the scale, as much energy as an entire town. And I just wondered if you've considered what that would do to already rising energy costs, you know, just based on supply and demand.
This whole application is pretty confusing. I think I, I'd recommend just denying that application and being, and get a, get a ordinance or get a, how, how do they want to apply? I mean, make them reapply. Is it undermining? Is there under Bitcoin or what? You might as well get this whole learning curve. We need to maybe learn before we approve them and have them reapply. And, and that, that might be the wisest thing, too.
That's.
And apply it, reapply it, reapply underneath.
Sure.
How you guys want it applied, define it. And maybe, you know, is there any setbacks to, is there any setbacks to this?
They do have, they do have setback requirements to, at here, too.
Excellent. What is a setback?
So from the, the road, they need to be 30, yeah, 30 foot from the right of way. And then they need to be a minimum of 10 off of the side yards. Since both of these sit in a corner lot, it works as two right-of-ways, two, two side yards. They don't have a rear yard requirement. So those would be their setback distances that they would have to.
No setbacks versus businesses or housing?
It's to the property line and to the right of way. So they have to stay within those, within the property line of that parcel.
No, nothing like a windmill or a utility-based other?
Same, same setbacks. On the parcel that they would be sitting on, those would be their setbacks.
So both of the sites that have been proposed are already zoned light industrial. So whatever the, and Amanda can correct me. So whatever those ordinances or those restrictions are for light industrials.
So only Hartland can use it? The, the zone residential just for Hartland or can they render it out to any?
They can lease, so Heartland Power has the right to lease their land. They have the right to do that as the company. They're the ones who.
To, to.
Who own those parcels.
Industrial.
So that, yes. So they're both zoned, both parcels right now are zoned as light industrial. So they have the right to lease that parcel as they see fit to a leasing.
So Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong. So the application was filed and the application fits into the current zoning ordinance that we have without any, without any errors in the application. So it makes it very difficult, if not impossible, for Amanda to decline it. Go ahead, John.
I guess we discussed this briefly.
Briefly.
Yeah, the zoning district for your light industrials.
Correct.
Very broad, I guess, which is atypical. So I think there's some interpretation. There's a category that says any use in your interpretation that doesn't affect, you know, noise, vibration, et cetera.
Smell, vibration, sound.
So you have to interpret that as a, as an administrator, as a county, on whether that fits that category. If you don't think so, you would probably have the right to deny them. But then there's also what you call a special exception. There are also, that you might recognize the term like conditional use permit, very exact same thing, just a different term, where you can apply conditions and it gets reviewed by your board of adjustments. And they can apply conditions based on the findings of their public hearing on that use. I guess with my understanding of Bitcoin mining and data centers, you may have concerns with noise, although maybe there's other systems that alleviate some of those concerns. Water use potentially, utility, or, uh, energy use would be one that's, I'd want to see, you know, something from the utility company probably to say, hey, this isn't going to. So that's, I guess if I'm a zoning administrator, I would interpret that as something I'd want to go through the special exception process if I was given your ordinance to interpret. So, yeah, like, like I said, a lot of stuff comes down to interpretation and the ordinance. There's a lot of room for gray area. Hence the reason for creating an ordinance that's more specific to data centers.
Hence for maybe denying that permit and, and getting the permit underneath the correct category.
Potential.
I'm going to, hold on here just one second. That's been the, what, one, one question or what you have to say?
I just want to say that I, I really appreciate the discussion going on here and that we need to be careful that we don't view Bitcoins centers and data centers all, as all of one size. And so a specific application might come in and the county certainly needs to be able to weigh in with respect to its impact on our resource, such as he mentioned, energy, availability, water, noise, those kinds of things. We need to have some flexibility in whatever ordinance we put out to recognize that these aren't all the same kind of facility. They will vary depending upon the needs of the person who wants to build them.
Thanks.
And maybe we're over our heads and maybe we need some help from people who have done these kinds of things in other areas. Because I do believe these demands are going to grow in the future.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to, I just want to talk from a legal perspective. I'm, I'm not going to talk from a policy perspective or, or whether this is good or bad or anything else. I invest in my retirement accounts and I've invested in various tech stocks. I've got nothing to do with that. From a legal perspective, here's the deal. So the light industrial zoning ordinance is, like John said, pretty broad, okay? I don't know if every county has it that broad or not. I suppose probably fairly broad or else, because I suppose ours came from somewhere, right? I didn't draft it and I don't think Mark drafted it. I assume it came from some draft organization. So I assume it's fairly uniform. Be that as it may, I don't have it in front of me, but I was looking at it just last week and it has things in there about, and I, I'm trying to recall from my head, noise, I don't know. Noise. No, various, various things, very general terms that, you know, I suppose you could say, I sit in that chair right there, oh, it makes too much noise. Okay, right? So I mean, so it's very big. So the problem you have is you're trying to interpret this ordinance and you say, okay, do we think these things create too much noise, for example? Well, I mean, under, if you look at the ordinance, that's what you got to decide. It talks about noise. It doesn't say how much noise. It doesn't say how many decibels. It doesn't say any noise. Okay? Well, that's probably, that's pretty big. So you say, well, okay, well, how are we supposed to interpret that? Now, what I'm going to say here is not, there's a representative from the proposed facility and his attorney here, I'm not saying anything that these guys haven't already thought about, right? So it's not like I'm giving away, oh, some grand strategy here because, I mean, you know, I'm not disclosing legal strategy that they don't know about, right? So it's like, here, here's the bottom line. What you have to decide is you say, okay, if we're trying to interpret this ordinance and we're trying to figure out if this facility fits into it, somewhat what you have to do is you have to say, well, what other facilities do fit into it and what other facilities don't fit into it, right? You got to be uniform, right? So you can't, for example, say, well, let's just say I wanted to put in, I don't know, I decided I want to work on motorcycles. I don't know anything about it, but I'm going to learn and I'm going to do it. So I'm going to put in something out there. And I got banging and planking around, but let's say I get approved. Okay? Well, then you can't very well look at another facility that's probably less noisy, thus of a nuisance, than I, and deny them, right? Because then you're like doing special treatment, right? I mean, so kind of what you have to do is you have to look and say, well, what other businesses are in this kind of zoning district? And one approach would be to compare them to this proposed facility. Are they less onerous, more onerous? You know what I'm saying? If, 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 for example, if this proposed facility, for example, puts out less noise, less smell, less everything than a business that's already there, I'd say, eh, you're probably flirting with danger a little bit tonight because you're not really applying your zoning ordinance evenly. You have to apply evenly, routinely and consistently. So I don't know what else is out there in that light industrial. I don't know. So I cannot comment on whether this proposed facility fits within the zoning ordinance other than comparing it maybe to what else is out there. Amanda may have some thoughts on it. I'm not trying to put her on the spot, but, you know, I mean, if, if you have a good faith position of saying, okay, you know, we don't let other stuff out there that makes noise or smell or whatever like this, so we're going to deny this permit. Okay, you, you might be on stable ground. But on the other hand, if you're going to say, well, no, we just don't like it because it's Bitcoin, then I'm going to say, okay, now you're starting to probably get into a legally precarious thing. So take the whole thing, whether it's Bitcoin or not, why don't you just take all that out? Take all that out of it and then just look at what it is. Does it fit in the district? Does it fit within whatever else is there or whatever else would be approved? And if so, then you probably, from a legal perspective, have to approve the application. If it doesn't, even deny it. Now, this is where, you know, somebody might say, oh, Murphy, don't say this. You're giving them ideas. Uh, trust me, I'm not giving these guys any ideas if they haven't already thought about them. One of the issues you have, you will note that this temporary moratorium has an exception in there for things for which applications have already been submitted. Somebody says, well, why, why, why that? Why, why are you giving that exception in there? Why don't you just put a moratorium on everything? Even if the application's evidence. I'd be cautious of that. And again, I'm not, I'm not giving legal strategy here that these guys haven't already thought about a million times. I know it. In fact, you had Worth County a while back went into litigation on their wind ordinance. There were a lot of things about that wind ordinance that were problematic. So it's, it's a little difficult to compare correctly to this, but, but one of the problems a judge had, and Worth County lost on that in, in a pretty big, went down in flames, if I recall, right? One of the reasons they went down in flames is because of what's called, and you hear this described in different ways, what's called the vested rights theory, okay? Vested rights theory, you read that Worth County opinion, it was, I think Judge Wieland wrote it. It's pretty well-written, pretty well-ported. And one of the things, I think it was Judge, I don't want to get my judges wrong, but anyway, what is explained in there, what the research shows is what's called the vested rights theory. And that is, I'm generalizing here, but let's say, excuse, an entirely different example, let's say I want to put a swimming pool, not in my backyard, maybe I want to put it in the front, right? And, and, and let's say it fits within the zone, right? And let's say there's somebody there, the neighbors that say, you know, Murphy, we want to see you swimming in the backyard. Right? Where do we see you? We don't like that. So somebody says, you know, we're going to, and let's just assume that I comply with the zoning, you know? It's just that people don't like it. They don't like what I'm going to do. So somebody says, hey, let's put a moratorium on that to keep him from doing it. Okay, fine. But let's say that I am already in compliance with the ordinance as it exists. I've spent a bunch of money, materials, I've hired a contractor, I've paid an unrefundable fee, I, I've expended all kinds of resources. I have what's called vested rights in that project. If somebody goes in now and says, no, we're going to shut you down, I'm going to argue you can't do that. I just spent all this money and time on this project. If you now want to stop, you should have done it before I put all this in there. I have vested rights, your moratorium doesn't apply. Worth County dealt with the ordinance, not a moratorium, but, but the reasoning is the same. In that case, the judge said, Worth County, you're, and, and, and the facts are quite a bit different, right? So it's hard to make a comparison to it. I'm just saying the legal principles kind of match. In that case, you know, the judge said, Worth County, you can't ban these things because they've already put all this time, money and expense in it. they've already put all this time, money, and expense in it. Of course, it was also true that it was out there in the world for everybody to see and everybody knew it was gonna happen and nobody did anything until last minute. So things are a little bit different there than here, perhaps, but the legal principle is the same, that if somebody has vested rights, in other words, I've put in all this time, money, and expense into this project that you now want to make, that you want to ban or prohibit, I might challenge that and say, I've got vested rights, your moratorium doesn't apply. I don't know that's what they're gonna do and I haven't just given them an idea. Someone will think, oh, you just gave them an idea. I didn't give them any damn idea, you know? I mean, you know, I mean, everybody, anybody that does this knows this. So that's why there's that exception in there that accepts out things for which applications have already been submitted. It's not an effort to appease anybody, make anybody happy, kiss anyone's butt. It's just from, well, from a legal perspective, this is kind of how I look at this. So that's why that exception is in there. You don't have to, but you don't have to do anything. It's not my idea. I just did what I was asked to draft something on. So I don't know if that makes it more confusing or less terrible comparison. Well, okay, Mr. Attorney then.
You gotta put, you gotta invest into money in this up before it gets approved. After approval, then.
Okay, no, I'm not gonna argue with you and I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm not saying you're right or wrong. I'm saying, as a legal advisor, consider these things, okay? Consider them, okay? That's what I'm saying. Now, here's another thing.
Here's another thing. We don't need that.
No, you had to interrupt me.
Hey, let's, here, let's, this is our meeting, okay?
You're gonna put it up.
You put it up, we're up to here.
No, this is, it's not your turn to comment, okay? I can walk out of here and leave everybody a free throw. Otherwise, you're gonna sit there, you're gonna be quiet, okay? The bottom line is, I'm trying to point out what the legal situation is, okay? I don't live my life worrying if I'm gonna get sued, but, no, I don't. But I do have to give it a thought, right? I can be a pretty aggressive person. I've litigated for almost 30 years and I'm pretty good at it. So I don't worry about getting sued, but you do have to think about it. What's gonna happen if I do? Do I win or I lose and how much is it gonna cost? That's called good business, okay? I understand you've got a problem with it as it exists because you live close to it, as I understand. I get that 100%. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm talking from a legal perspective. Everybody better have all the facts and consider all the views because you gotta be ready to defend your position. That's what I'm saying. I'm not, you know.
Thanks, Aaron. Let's, let's continue on here. This is our meeting, it's not time to argue amongst the audience. So let's get back to, Jim, how do you feel on your discussion with data centers?
So I'm prepared to approve the resolution based on its data center as a data center.
And Pam, and you, you get your explanations.
Well, I was just gonna say that unfortunately, as a public, we're all in the same boat in that technology is growing so fast and we might not know for 20 years the effects that things have on us as far as that's concerned. And unfortunately, this board has to look at all of the data. The light industrial district is number one, dot 24. I encourage you to look it up and, and I also encourage people to set up tours and, and go visit the facilities that, at Manchester, yes, they're fairly new. I would certainly expect that anything that needs to be addressed would be addressed. And so at this point, I do think we need to have a moratorium in place to move forward. And so I move to approve resolution, is it 1336-25?
Correct.
The resolution to establish a moratorium on data centers. And if Rachel wants to read it.
I think I thought you should probably read it.
Right.
Rachel?
I don't want to read it. One of you guys can. But in here, you need to have the date that it expires.
I, I didn't, I don't know what, I don't know what we want to do.
Correct. So, and let me, while we're still discussing that motion, I would amend that to be in place for a year on that. That allows the Planning and Zoning Commission time to review information. I know they're also working on a solar ordinance, so.
May I suggest end of the year, so it's a clear date rather than just.
Question for December 31st.
December 31st.
It's an easy day to remember.
Okay, I will amend that motion to that effect.
If you would like it read, I could read it.
I can read it.
Okay. Resolution number 1336-25, establishing a moratorium on data centers. Whereas facilities used for storage, management, processing, and transmission of digital data which house, which house computer or network equipment, systems, servers, appliances, and other associated components related to digital data storage, including but not limited to high-density computing facility data centers, have the potential to create an excessive burden on energy and water resources affecting nearby property owners as well as all residents who rely on the local power grid for electricity or sources of portable water. And whereas the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors recognizes that data centers may affect the availability of water and reliability, reliable electricity to the surrounding area and the board desires that all applications for data centers be considered consistently with the state goals of the Mitchell County Comprehensive Plan that develop, that development, support and implement sustainability strategies that preserve natural resources, support and advance energy efficiency, resource conservation. Counting natural resources, land, water, and air, that the most appropriate uses of land are encouraged throughout Mitchell County. And whereas Mitchell County Board of Supervisors recognizes that data centers may affect the character of the surrounding area and the board desires that all applications for data centers be considered consistently so that the most appropriate uses of land are encouraged throughout Mitchell County. Whereas the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors desires to explore the possibility of adopting supplemental conditions and/or changing the procedural review and approval requirements for data centers. And whereas doing such would necessitate processes subject to the public hearing process. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors hereby establishes a moratorium on the approval on any applications for variances, exceptions, rezoning, subdivisions, or site plan approval, or the issuance of any building permits related to the citing or construction of a data center in unincorporated Mitchell County, expiring at, and we'll do that, you want me to say the date, December 31st, central time on, if it's approved today, 2025, unless extended by, I'm sorry, 2026, unless extended by further action of the board supervisors to allow above reference consideration and/or action concerning data centers. And be it further resolved that immediately preceding paragraphs does not apply to applications for any data center which an application was submitted prior to the adoption of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors reserves the right to end the moratorium prior to the approved term of the moratorium upon completion of said consideration and/or action and satisfactory resolution of issuance as determined by the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors. And be it further resolved that the moratorium approved by this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption of this resolution. So we have, Jim, did you make the motion?
Pam made the motion.
Pam. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So the two applications that are already entered can go through.
Correct. Roll call.
Roll call, Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
No.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Approved clerk of court report for October.
Make motion.
Hey, Mark has made a motion. Do I have a second? I second it. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
Roll call, Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Can we be quiet, please, so I can hear? Thank you.
Okay, meetings attended. Transfers. Transfers to secondary roads. Oh. Approved resolution for transfers of secondary roads. We're getting rich.
Okay, so there's two resolutions. The first one is for general basic to secondary roads for a total of $119,509. And the second one is for rural services to secondary roads. This will happen in two sections, but this resolution approves for both of them for a total.
You gotta leave them open?
Yeah, John, they need to stay open. Be left open.
It has to be open.
For a total of $1,722,126, the portion that will be transferred today will be $861,063.
Okay, so do we have a motion, transfer secondary roads?
If I have the resolution numbers incorrect, let me know, but I've approved resolutions 1337-25 and 1338-25.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, roll call.
Roll call, Pam?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Okay, thanks for the reminder, Mark. Now, yeah, meetings attended.
Okay, I had a Mitchell Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. I remember what happened here. So because of the government shutdown, the federal employees that are part of this are just going back to work, they catch up with a lot of messages and work, et cetera. In regards to the soil health events coming up, Howard County is the host, as I've mentioned before, and they're in the planning stages with the four counties to make that happen. There's a new GIS program that shows type of cover crop and on a track of land, and this is a statewide thing that we're talking about Mitchell County, so it shows up the type of cover crop that's on a track of land in Mitchell County. It's not known if anybody can have access to that. It sounds like they kind of, not the Soil and Water Conservation, but the state doesn't want it to be known for everybody. And I made the comment that I'd like to see that not just for the Rock Great watershed, but for the entire county and for the public to be able to just use that. To me, it's government program and so it should be, so people should have access to it. But anyway, that was my comment about that. And the school bill applications are going out for signatures and then we should probably be getting those after that happens. I had an Osage City Council meeting last night, extremely short agenda, meeting went by very fast. I guess the biggest thing that they did was they had a public hearing on their FY25 budget amendment. I talked about, Rock talked about the projects that are happening in Osage that are winding it down, near completion, if not almost completed. Some dirtwork that needs to be done in regards to some of the sidewalks adjacent to the roads, but freezing temperatures coming and they're working like crazy to get it done. That's all I had.
I had none.
I only had phone conversation meetings with several individuals on the data Bitcoin situation.
County Social Service meeting, Zoom only because they only approved the bills and the time sheets for those two individuals that are left now. And December will be our last meeting and if it goes as scheduled, it's gonna be about $2.5 million returned to the state, County Social.
Some of that money was county money.
That's what they, they thought it should be returned to the counties in our, but the state has better ideas.
Yeah, of course.
Well, that'd be nice to get some. And that's it.
I had a FMC early childhood. Now, this was my early childhood. Mitchell, Floyd, and Chickasaw were still having our meetings alongside with the joining of the four other counties through this year, through June 30th. We went through the financials. They did have, we had some mid-year requests for proposals. We had some providers there that did some presentations, all very good for our young kids. Went to the FY26 first quarter reports. Everything's going good with families together, learning connection and preschool scholarships. And then I also had a FMC deCAT meeting, went through approved FY26 contracts, no update on the alignment, and the planning committee is working on movie nights and I believe backpacks for kids. That's it. So public comment?
Yes. I think, Mr. Chairman, you didn't see my hand up. It was up for many different times on the discussion about simple mining and I had simply some comments that are not meant to be argumentative.
I'm gonna stop you there. I don't see anything on our agenda for simple mining.
And some question, no, but when you were talking about it, excuse me, when they were talking, when Pam talked about her trip.
Data centers.
Simple mining.
The data center is the Bitcoin facility.
The data center is.
Yeah, I understand that, but during that time.
Just let her make her comments.
Yeah. I had some comments about the application.
Well, can you take that up with Amanda? She's the one that looks over.
I sort of want to make some comments and I think in public comment time.
Make your comment. You've got three minutes.
I would like to say that I spoke with Pam, I spoke with three of the members that went on the tour, and I guess my questions were that I found out that the plant had only been up and running for two weeks and some of it wasn't up and running yet, or I mean, it wasn't turned on. But anyway, that wouldn't give much time to evaluate problems. And then electronic magnetic frequencies, that came up, and somebody that's done research on scientific things has just said, what, yeah, what would that do to? that do to, it would be harmful to living tissues, both plant and animal. Now, the other thing I wanted to ask was, they said it was a corn-based solution with glycol that was going to run the units. And isn't water, my question is, isn't water, would water be used with the corn? And once, I mean, I don't know how often those get cleaned, but when they do get cleaned and the disposal of that, would that become a hazardous waste? And if so, where would it be disposed? I've been involved with hazardous waste and so on. So, and then the other thing is, it seems to me that the biggest benefactor for this whole thing is Hartland. It's not really the people in the county. But does the board supervisors have final approval? It simply, it's my understanding, it no longer goes to the board that whatever the finding commission, do they vote on it then? Or does Amanda just simply approve the application?
Amanda's the director.
Right, I know she is.
That's the answer. Amanda's the director.
So does that get approved there or by her commission?
By her. She's the director.
By her, okay.
And if it's in the guidelines of the ordinance.
Right. And I guess what I would like to ask is about the, you know, how they dispense any glycol or corn base once, they must have to clean the units. So where do you put it? It just migrates in the air.
Lasts on a year and a half to two years.
Todd, this is public comments. This isn't a public forum, okay?
And there's no harm to anybody or anything. I mean, I, I just simply think that Pam went and no other supervisor went, and it would be nice if the board supervisors would have known more about the whole thing.
Okay, thanks, Benny, that's true.
I know.
Okay, well, I have a question, because I had my hands up too. And this is just, it's not, I'm not trying to pick on anything. I know you already passed the moratorium, but I'm disappointed that I'd like it put like Amanda said was the form that was applied to. It said data mine, or data center slash mining, Bitcoin mining. I would like to see, I mean, I can't now, but I would have liked to see that put in there because that is a loophole. What if somebody comes and applies and it says Bitcoin only? Maybe you can answer it. I mean, I, I'm not, I want to, I'm gonna pause on my three minutes, because I'd like the question answered.
So, so to clarify, Bitcoin is a data mining facility. So they would fall under the same.
Because I've done some research, and Bitcoin and data centers do have some similarities, but they are different because of the.
Right, but they would both, both types of facilities would fall, in my understanding, would fall under.
As long as that is in a loophole for somebody to come in and data mine. And I do agree with you, Pam. I've done research on this hydro pool, and this is much better than the Van thing, seeing how I look out down the road. But I do have a concern, like Benny said, about the corn glycol. It is safe, but once it goes through the system, what I've been reading, it's called, it turns into industrial waste, so it has to be handled that way. And I would hope, you know, I don't know how all this works, but I would like to see if they have guidelines and it's in writing, so we have some liability, you know, liability that we can do. The other thing is, it has nothing to do with Bitcoin, because I was listening to John and Amanda on this light industrial. How the heck did ballot get out there, being that it's supposed to be stink and all this other stuff? I mean, can, I mean, they're already there, so they're grandfathered. But, and I, and I'm Northwest. I mean, the Northwest wind carries it to my place.
I hear your challenge.
Thankfully, there's a mask, I can't smell quite. I mean, a lot of times it smells sweet, and other people are dying. But anyway, is there, you know, because it sounds like there's such a broad range on that light industrial, according to what John said, can that be tightened up, or can that be changed, or what? I mean, for future use, because, you know.
I believe they talked about that.
And that might be a situation.
Correct, but they, John also said that, but we should maybe take a look at that.
Okay.
And so did Aaron and, and so.
Well, and what's there now, like you said, that the thing is already applied for. And they're not going to be noisy or smelling like ballot. But, you know, they're, they own that whole land, and other businesses could be there. So we need to, you know, tighten that up or make it more, not so broad, like John said, because that is a concern to me. And I don't know how you do that, because I'm not usually involved in this kind of stuff, right?
My understanding would be in visiting with other counties, that when they work through their moratorium for the data centers, they might also be updating their light industrial district. So those two might go somewhat hand in hand. I don't want to say that for sure as a board member, but certainly they will be looking at, you know, what the guidelines are. Because I had to quote the light industrial.
I didn't know there was a difference, because somebody have an industrial part.
And that's three minutes, so.
Yeah.
But I'm, but she's talking too, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to get some information for people out here. Because the data mine, the data, or the mining facility, I would say fits under light industrial. But I'm just worried that something else will come in that doesn't, you know? I mean, if we don't tighten up that definition, that's all.
And that's all.
Certainly, it's.
Planning and zoning office.
That is that too.
You could go and talk with them.
Well, see, I told you, so I'm just trying to find out information, but.
Okay, any other public comments? Go ahead, Pete.
I have a public comment. Keep in mind that public does have opinion and they have a right to understand. If you need more information to figure out how to dispense this properly, spend the money and do it. The people of county are going to applaud you for that. People have rights, businesses, machinery, all that stuff, none of those things have rights. People own those things, and they have a right to use them. But we need to regulate it properly, you do it for manure management, everything else. This is just another commodity that needs to be dispensed properly. Just because they come to a rural area and think they can shove it through quickly is not the answer to it. Deal with the vote.
That's why we're doing the ordinance.
Patty.
I just want to thank you for picking up this issue clerk of court in ordinance, because I think there'll be more pressure on rural areas, and it's hard to think of the unintended consequences. I always go to the agricultural drain wells, seemed like a great idea, and it took a few years to figure out that they were contaminating our drinking water. Didn't realize it at the time. And it's like you said, Pam, we may not know for 10 years, like some of the unintended consequence, like the windmills, you know, the blades, they didn't have a plan for what to do with the blades, they had to figure it out. But you spend a little time anticipating as many things as you can before, it's not just about Bitcoin mining, anything that comes in. If it's going to create a waste product, you need these hydro cool, you have to look into what, when they change that, is it a waste product, you know, get that in there, but they have to dispose of it in a way that it's not going to be contaminating our water. You have to look into the EMS, as many things as you can now before you draft it for whatever might come in. And then understand, well, after a few years, you might realize we need to revisit that, but, because we can't anticipate everything. But I applaud your efforts in forward thinking on this. You know, Bitcoin, this simple mining guy, I mean, he's just been hammering away at this. All you can do is look ahead. What are some things you can do to protect the, our water, our power, and the citizens of the county? And I applaud you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
I wanted to say thank you as well. I appreciate the moratorium so much. And I think all of us who live here want livable land. And so we're committed to working with you, and we're planning and zoning, and creating ordinances that makes sense for people to continue living and loving, living in Mitchell County. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Vince.
Yeah, I appreciated Aaron's comments there. It needs to be applied evenly, and I, I was going to bring that up. Consider where these facilities are going to be next to a substation with keep out signs and cooling fans, and what a great expense to keep the wildlife away from it on a danger perspective. And that's where these are going to be located. They're up and running, nobody will even know they're there, except for all the discussion that way over the size of this and the size of them. And Benny, corn alcohol, a lot of people drink that, you know? And electricity, these are controlled facilities that would be shut off, electricity's tight. The end effect will be it'll moderate electric bills and help strengthen the coops. The power, we're working with our instrument, it'll help them. They just spent a fortune bringing another substation to O Sage to build resilience in the system in O Sage. And Hartland Power, Betty, when you talk about Hartland Power like a black box that sucks money, and Hartland Power, picture 4,500 faces of neighbors that live in. Tom was here from the elevator co-op, same thing. When you think the O Sage co-op, you can picture 150 members there. It's not a, not a black box that sucks money out of there. So we're here to serve.
I didn't say it sucks money out.
But that's the way it sounds.
No, I said they were the benefit.
But I appreciate Pam going and taking advantage of it. A lot of these questions have been answered in the past year, but as it comes now, they're being asked again. Adam, will you be more than happy to?
He will. And he's accountable, you know? I think he's made some updates.
Anyway, thanks a lot, and this permit should go through. When people see it up and running, they'll think, well, that's what this was. And then keep in mind, data center, you've got one in the courthouse. There's a server room somewhere here that's storing all the information. Hartland Power, we're storing all customers. There's businesses up and down Main Street full of computer servers. The phone wheel next to your head, the EMS, you know? What's that going to be in, it's like 20, 30 years ago, what are we going to find out with that? Anyway, thanks, Todd.
Yeah, thank you, Vince. Okay. I don't see any more hands up. We'll adjourn this meeting at 10:11.